All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I call the City Council meeting of the whole meeting for September 2nd, 2020 to order.
At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Let's think about peace. Thank you. Alderman Ambrose, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, with which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose.
Brian, if you'd please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten percent, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. So, good evening, everyone. As we get in the meeting of the City Council, this committee, the whole, I'd again like to welcome you and everyone in attendance, those viewing the meeting on the computer end or mobile devices. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind your talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and viewers throughout the region as these meetings are recorded. So, we're happy you are participating in your civic government and ask your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. At this time, if you have a cellphone, if you put it on silent, please, or turn it off so it doesn't get in the way of what we're doing. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the committee agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that particular committee discussion. You also have the opportunity to address the City Council under Public with Business at the end, which will occur towards the end of the meeting. Please, when addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or respective council folks, and speak to us all as a body and not any single member. When you come up here, except for public hearings, please remember you have five minutes. Please be respectful, we'll be respectful of you and courteous, and I ask everyone to please do the commonly accepted rules of decorum and dignity and good taste. Thank you. Ms. Spiegel, any city administrator or staff update today?
Just a reminder that our city facilities will be closed on Monday in observation of Labor Day, and so solid waste pickup will also be delayed by one day next week.
Very good, solid waste delayed, okay. All right, I hope everybody has a good weekend this weekend. So, we'll have three public hearings this evening, two in community development, one in Public Works. Community development's led by Alderman Gripp, so Alderman Gripp, if you'd be kind enough to lead those public hearings.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public, I opened the hearing, public number, public hearing number one for the ordinance for case REZ 20-06 being the request of Malwa LLC to rezone 1.3 acres, more or less, of property located at 4425 West Locust Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 Corridor Commercial. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? State your name and address or ward, please.
William McCullough, 4030 Jersey Ridge Road, and I'm the attorney for Malwa LLC, petitioner in this particular action. This property is located at 4425 West Locust Street, which is right across the street from E-Mines Park. This particular property has been a convenience store gas station for over 30 years, until this year it was owned by an Illinois corporation, until this year when it was purchased by two Davenport businessmen who own Malwa LLC. They are asking to have the property rezoned so they could be able to sell liquor in addition to beer and wine, which they currently can do under their grandfathered license. The reason they're asking this is there are other competitors, particularly SubX Express, which is a convenience store gas station only a block and a half away, that can already sell liquor products. As you head towards east, towards the fairgrounds, you run into other convenience store gas stations and liquor stores that are able to do the same, sell liquor products. In order to be competitive and to be able to offer their, the same services that other places do, they're asking for the rezoning of this particular property.
Thank you. This is a public hearing now, so there will be an opportunity later in the agenda for council to weigh in and then ask any questions, if there are any. Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two is on the amended annual action plan for year 46 for the CDPG and home programs. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next public hearing is in, under Public Works. Alderman Dunn will lead that. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one public hearing this evening for Public Works. Open the public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Union Arcade Building's subsurface vault fill and support. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and this public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next area then is petition and communications, so I'll start off. Just wanted to let everybody know that I got some calls and talked to some folks up here and others concerning the curfew last Saturday, so I don't take it lightly. I talk to folks and consider and then certainly weigh what the reason we're doing it. So, I want to let people know, this is not a policy, this is not a thing that I would use normally unless there's a serious thing that's being considered. So, I'm happy to continue to have conversations with folks, happy to kind of talk you through what I was thinking, and I know maybe there'll be more discussion about it, I'm happy to have it, but it's not a normal kind of course of action, but, and it's a serious thing when we do it, but the reason this was done was because of a serious potential public safety issue that we were concerned about. So, I just want to take a moment, again, most people I think have my cellphone or email, please conversate with me if you'd like. So, moving on, Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be a little lengthy, so I apologize, but I've prepared it to try and be on point here. And kind of dovetailing into a little bit of what Mayor was talking about, I'd like to speak this evening, as over the past couple of months, I've listened to many people speak about some very important issues. I've been sitting and listening without comment because I try to adhere to a favorite quote I often read. The quote cites, "Most people do not listen with the intent to understand, they listen with the intent to reply." However, as of last week, the tone of the message to which I have been listening changed, almost starting to incite violence, in my opinion, and that is very concerning to me. Therefore, I feel compelled to say something this evening. For those in the audience, I ask a few things this evening. I ask for your attention, that you listen to understand, for no interruptions, and no accusations or assumptions. I will explain why I ask these things, and then I look to provide some thoughts about the issues being discussed within our community and make some personal calls to action. The reason why I ask for your attention is because last week I observed a group of people looking down at their phones or something else when the presentation honored the people that came during the rescue of the residents during the July 3rd structure fire, fire, excuse me. Also during this presentation, I did not see any clapping to honor these brave acts. I was glad that toward the end of the presentation, there was attention given to the girls offering their thanks as people were looking toward the video screen and did provide applause. I do my best to give my undivided attention to those that speak at council, so therefore I ask the same from the audience. Attention is important because without that conscious effort, listening will not occur. Listening to understand can help overcome the lack of communication that leads to misunderstanding and conflict. Many people have come before the council asking why we aren't listening and why we aren't acting. I contest that we have been listening, and there has been some action taken. The prime example is the implicit bias and cultural sensitivity training that is going to be conducted for all supervisors within the city. There's been significant work by staff to coordinate these efforts and mandate their attendance. Further, this fact has been communicated by the mayor on multiple occasions, with the last occurrence being last Wednesday. While I know that we as a council have to listen so we can act appropriately, I hope that those in the audience also listen. Listening with the intent to understand and not just reply can also help prevent interruptions. I have witnessed too many interruptions over the past few weeks with acknowledgement that the interruptions have gone both ways. However, last week, everything hit ahead. I believe we can all be more respectful and therefore ask those of you in the audience to refrain from further interruptions. Rather, if you do not like what I have to say, I will be here after the meeting. Please, come forward, I'll gladly sit down, talk with low-volume voices and have a frank discussion. The respect shown by not interrupting others can also be shown through a lack of accusations and assumptions. Last week, there were many accusations hurled about and targeted a member of this council. While I know this member does not need my defense, I feel these accusations are misleading and demonstrate a lack of respect for the opinions of others that are opposite of yours. While on this topic, I want to be clear that I heard your claims to vote this member out, and I will do none of the sort. Further, the assumptions made about people on this council have been often without foundation. Again, if you want to learn about who I am and what I believe, feel free to have a conversation with me. Otherwise, I believe that your assumptions are nothing more than a reflection of your own bias, knowing that all us human beings have bias. With all that said, I want to make some comments about my thoughts regarding potential police reform. First, I must remind that we have a police department that is working hard to meet the needs of our residents, and they're doing a tremendous job. I believe that we should all still point out that our police department is doing great things, even if there are opportunities within the department to improve. Further, I would ask that people speaking about reform be careful not to imply that the whole department is bad, because I believe that is a gross inaccuracy. There are significant threats to safety in our community, and these brave men and women work tirelessly. Further, their presence, their presence has led to quick response, which has saved lives. I already spoke about the fire on July 3rd, in which multiple officers were quick to respond. Another example was the quick response of officers this weekend, as they were, as they were able to utilize measures to save the life of a woman who was shot while in her car. I think our police department is ahead of the curve. Shortly following the tragic incident resulting in the death of George Floyd, Chief Sikorski gave a presentation indicating that our police department has been already doing items for which people have been calling, especially those that, the, excuse me, that want the department to institute the eight-can't-wait philosophy. As a reminder, some of the things that our department has already done are the CLIA accreditation, which of note, Minneapolis, Kenosha, Louisville, Portland, none of those police departments are CLIA accredited. We also have our department considering a chokehold is a lethal use of force, which restricts their application and requires specific training. There is a policy for use of body cameras, a no-quote-a-policy, a process for review of traffic stops to identify patterns of inappropriate behavior so they can be addressed, and a policy that is recognized as more effective than the use of a force continuum. Also, in speaking with Chief Sikorski, our department has not requested a no-knock warrant since 1993, and the department has no other methods, or, excuse me, has other methods within their policies and procedures, which they use because they know they are more effective than a no-knock warrant. Therefore, when people claim nothing is being done since some of the tragic incidents that have occurred in other communities, and that there are no actions to keep us from having these incidents occurs, I say action has already taken place, and that our police department is significantly different than the communities I've mentioned previously. I realize that there always be a risk of tragic events that have occurred in other communities, but again, I remind you that we are fortunate to have a police department that is working hard to be a great community resource and partner, as well as protecting all of its citizens. Regardless of having a police department that is ahead of the curve, our community is fortunate that our police chief is someone who recognizes that there are always ways in which they can improve. Chief Sikorski is not someone that needs me to come to his defense either. In a short period of time, I've been able to have multiple conversations with him. For those of you who have concerns, I encourage you to take the time to listen to what he says and observe what he does, as he is a leader that our community needs and someone that is always willing to improve. Speaking of improvement, the component of any improvement we make does require public input. Again, many people come to council making their recommendations, as well as claims that there remains to be a failure to act. While the recommendations of those coming forward are being heard, we must also realize that another entity is going to be making some recommendations to the council and the police department. The Civil Rights Commission has been holding their special meetings with the mayor and police chief attending through the online platforms. I have attended each of those meetings, and the colleagues on the council with which I have spoken have also been attending. Personally, I look forward to the upcoming, their next upcoming meeting on the 21st, as I have some questions, I'm always willing to learn, to understand how we can, we as a community can improve. While there are upcoming meetings, I believe it would be unfair to act without, act further without having this input, and that people need to be reminded of other actions occurring and being taken into consideration before a policy change can be made. On the topic of the Civil Rights Commission, police reform and not having police monitor other police, I must remind many that there's already a process in place to monitor the actions of police officers. The Civil Rights Commission is an organization that can investigate claims against police violating the civil rights of citizens of protected status. Through inquiring with staff, I learned that since 2017, there have been 18 civil rights complaints against the Davenport Police Department. All 18 were reviewed by the Iowa Civil Rights Commission and closed with a finding of no probable cause. Therefore, to me, it is great that there is already a process where people outside of the police department can be utilized to make sure that PD is upholding citizens' civil rights. Further, I find it even better that there have been zero claims with findings of civil rights violations since 2017. Turning to social justice, I want to unequivocally state that I am too, that I too am saddened by the tragedies that are occurring in this world, especially when it comes to racial injustice and oppressive practices. I'm also thankful to those that come to the council to raise awareness about these injustices, as well as those that have been peacefully demonstrating within our city. I believe it is imperative that we continue to recognize good people doing good things, such as speaking civically, or civilly, excuse me, working with youth in schools and providing opportunities for those with marginal, within marginalized communities. We must also be against hate through our words and our actions, including the continued racism that occurs within our community. Something I hear many people say is that it is not good enough just to not be racist, but we must be anti-racist. Therefore, my commitment is that I will be more vocal to point out hate and racist acts, making sure my actions also reflect those of an anti-racist. I vow not to just be complacent with only making sure that I am not acting in a hateful manner. Many have pointed out the racist flyers that have been spread throughout the community. I have been notified by residents of the 6th Ward that have received these flyers. I have shared prudent information with the police chief, and he has informed me that there's an investigation to try and halt the spreading of this filth. As we know, these battles are all uphill, but they are being fought by our police department. Also, as a resident of Davenport who condemns all, or hate in all forms, and does not want any organization to spread hate, I say to the National Alliance and any of its members, take your trash out of our community. You do not speak for me and the good citizens, citizens of Davenport when no part of your propaganda. To those in the audience and watching the video of this meeting, I request that we also call out hateful actions that create unrest in our community. We must call out the type of behaviors that led to the night of unrest in our community a few weeks ago, and that are negatively affecting communities across our nation. Further, we must all take a stand against the incessant gun violence that is plaguing Davenport and the Quad Cities, the same violence that led to nine shooting victims in the Quad City over the weekend. If silence equals violence when it comes to racist acts, then silence equals violence when it comes to these hateful actions as well. Therefore, do not be silent against the gun violence in Davenport. Which leads me to my calls for action. I ask all residents of Davenport to speak in a clear message that rioting under the false pretense of protest and gun violence will not be tolerated. I would hope that those coming to the podium to speak about police reform and social justice also clearly denounce rioting, looting, and the illegal use of firearms. I do not want to guess that silence against these activities insinuates that you are in favor of these measures to achieve the outcomes you are asking and other avenues to be addressed. Further, I would like to see the organizations within the community which have influence to organize rallies to take back our streets and eliminate violence. Let's walk arm-in-arm, at night if we have to, making sure the criminals in our community either choose to stop their behavior or take it somewhere else. We can't have any more fatalities, destruction of property, and spreading of fear. I also call members of our community to become more involved in our schools. Follow the example of those in our community that are positively engaged, so that we can provide a positive experience for the students of the Davenport Community School District. We've had many recent discussions about the utilization of SROs, and people have made mention of the school-to-prison pipeline. Personally, I do not believe SROs are anywhere close to the root of the ills that plague our youth. I am in favor of SROs, and throughout this process, I have learned that we have wonderful people in these positions that are doing great things for students. I'm hopeful that the current actions taken by the mayor, as well as members of the task force, will continue to improve this program. Further, since the school district is asking for the officers, I am less inclined to take the SROs out of schools. Therefore, for those of you that believe SROs are a bad thing, or they don't contribute positively to the school experience, I ask you to make sure you are going to, going into the schools, to read to young kids, organize after-school activities where kids can have access to positive role models, or even make sure you direct your communication towards the school district. Without doing these things, I am fearful any frustration that surrounds a program of SROs will continue. My last call to action is that people continue to come to council, sharing their ideas as to how we can improve. Ask that you be specific, and please do not just ask us to do something. We need people to be involved in their government, and we need people to know that their government is working for them, and everyone needs to be aligned when their adjustments are required, excuse me, when there are adjustments required to improve specific aspects of the system. My personal goal is that we have continued conversations about racism and improvement of police practices. However, I hope that through our actions, the tenet of those conversations are about the successes of our community, how we have overcome obstacles and are appropriately addressing hate, disproportionality, and marginalization. I know that unfortunately, we'll never get rid of the, get rid, excuse me, never rid the world of these ills, because where there is love, unfortunately, there will be hate. However, through our actions, our practices, and our policies, we can make sure that we aren't complicit racists or oppressors. I wish all my fellow Davenport residents and fellow members of humanity well. I thank you for your conscious effort to listen to my thoughts and opinions. I vow to listen to you with a goal of understanding, so my actions improve the conditions for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight, and Alderman Jobchin, thank you for your thoughtful, I know you spent a lot of time on that and a lot of research, and thank you for that. That was illuminating for me as well. So, just a couple of things, Your Honor. I don't have pictures tonight, I had a picture, and somehow it didn't get sent. My email was not responding, I didn't click twice today, saying, this is about the census. So, we are, you know, moving into, this is our, we countdown, September 30th is the last day for the census. US stands at 65.1%, Iowa at 69.9%, has not reached its 20, this is response rate, self-response rate, and our city's at 67.7%. We had some really great increases, and I'm happy to say that this great census track 130 over in the 6th Ward is now over, its self-response rate. It looks like that 6th Ward will be going for the goal, Alderman Jobchin, it's doing very well, and so that one went over, and that's what we hoped for, and they're somehow very close. We have 13 censuses tracks out of our 34 that have overachieved their self-response rates for 2010, and we still have ones that are, that are close and others that are far behind. So, we will continue to push forward. I was a little disturbed today, they're starting to report on the census website, if you want to see this, go and take a look, but the self-response and the enumerator response, because that's happening. Some states, and it's, it's states like Idaho that have a very small population, you know, have a tremendous number of people, had many less self-response rate and a high enumerator rate. We're only in Iowa at about 10%, so only have about 10% being added to our 69.9% in terms of enumerators. I hope that perhaps some things didn't get reported in Iowa, because it's, that's low. There are many states with a greater renumerator response, and that's, of course, people coming and knocking on your doors. So, please, if you haven't done your census, if you know someone who hasn't, please help them do it, talk to them about it, tell them to call me, I'll help them, let's get this done. We are, I'll keep reporting on this, and I promise to have my pictures again next week, and I will get that out this, tomorrow on Facebook, and we'll get that out to the council in an email. I also wanted to mention that I do have, since the pandemic hit, I'm having my first in-person ward meeting, and that's Saturday, September 12th, September 12th at 10:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. We will also try to have it virtually at the same time. I will ask people to wear masks, so that will be the first in-person one, and we'll see how it goes, and hopefully it goes well. So, again, that's Saturday, September 12th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the items of discussion. So, we have four areas, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. Community develop items, if you have, when it gets to your agenda item, if you want to talk, this is the time that I believe the chair will let you speak. So, the first area is community development, which is led by Alderman Gripp and Alderman Lee. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have two items on the community development agenda this evening. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 20-06 being the request of Malwa LLC to rezone 1.38 acres, more or less, of property located at 4425 West Locust Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 Corridor Commercial. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Oh, shit. Sorry. I'll, I'll go with Alderman Dunn first.
Thank you. Do we have someone from staff that can give us an update of how we got there with all the rezoning we did and the process we went through to get to where we're at and now why we're being asked to change?
Hello, everyone. I'm Laura Berkeley, I'm the Development and Planning Administrator for the city. So, a rezoning process starts with a discussion with the petitioner, and they fill out an application. We do a neighborhood meeting, and letters were sent out to a 200-foot area around the subject property. Then we had a public hearing at the Planted Zone Commission meeting, and the following that public hearing, we had the decision at the Planted Zone Commission meeting. Following that, we published, there was, so there's a notice of paper associated with the public hearing for the Planted Zone, and there was a notice published in the paper related to the public hearing here today. So, that's the general process that we have gone. In terms of the overall zoning, it was a conscious effort on both the Planted Zone and the City Council to downzone these, to not allow retail alcohol sales moving forward. So, with that respect in mind, that was one of the reasons the commission, the Planted Zone Commission, went with a unanimous recommendation for denial.
And what was, what was their vote? Was that 9-0, I believe?
9-0, yes.
Alderman Dorman.
Thank you. My, I guess, one concern just comes, could, could you speak on specifically how a like-minded business in like the same area, just a couple of blocks away, may potentially have different zoning statuses that able them, allow them to sell liquor? Is that something that was grandfathered in, or was that zoned differently, or how? What are those differences?
It is grandfathered, and the one that was referenced in particular is grandfathered that they will not be allowed to expand the building footprint as part of their current zoning, unless they also try to rezone. The larger one that was being referred to is illegal retail alcohol sales, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Peacock.
I'm sorry, I was hard in here, I really didn't care, but I didn't hear what you said. What was the actual reason for the denial?
It was not conforming with the future land use plan, the comprehensive plan, and with a conscious effort to reduce the amount of retail alcohol sales along the Locust Corridor.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee. No, no. Okay. Okay.
But thank you for starting.
Is there anyone else from, from council who has any comments on this one? Alderman Dorman?
I guess just for... Tom, just for clarification, what we'd be voting on today is just first consideration, so logically, it would make sense for us to pass it and then typically do the third, where if we didn't agree, we would do something differently, or did agree. Is that typically how it works, or?
We're, we're just a committee of the whole, so they're not voting today, and we'll just move on to the council meeting next week. We've had one fairly recently that you all, on first consideration, voted to deny it. It's very similar to this and another ward. I think this is now the third... I think this is now the third time in like two years that we've had a request like this, and both the other two have been denied.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the council who wishes to speak? All right. Thank you, Laura, I appreciate it. And actually, Tom took my thunder there, that's what I was going to say, that, you know. But anyways, also, when we did the zoning update in the last council, this was one thing that we strategically tried to do. Our tools in the state of Iowa to limit alcohol sales are very limited, and so this is one way that we were able to get after it, and so far, the council has been fair in the way that it has voted on items like this. So seeing no one else, we will move on to item number two, which is a motion approving the amended annual action plan for year 46 for the CDBG and home programs. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Okay. This item would move on, and Alderwoman Lee, would you please set the agenda?
Do you want the first one for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp. I move that item one be moved on for discussion, and item two go to the consent.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. So the second item is to be discussed, area is public safety. Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Jobson will lead that discussion. Alderman Ambrose, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item for discussion is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 6 of Chapter 10.96 entitled speed limits by heading Utica Ridge Road from Crow Creek Road to Veterans Memorial Parkway as a 35 mile per hour street. Anybody from the council? Alderman Jobson.
I'd like to thank staff for getting this on the agenda. This is something that was brought up by residents in the six wards, especially those living along Utica Ridge Road, as commercial development has increased through this corridor. A speed limit of 45 from our city limit there to the south, all the way out to Veterans Memorial Parkway was getting, or was creating some safety risks. So I thank Gary Stats for running the numbers and coming up with this recommendation, so we can have this and make a continuous speed limit from Betnora all the way through Davenport and decrease risk. Thank you.
Anybody else?
We're lucky to have Gary Stats as our traffic engineer. Great man. Number two is a resolution approving the following street closures on the listed date and times to hold outdoor events. The first one is St. Paul Lutheran Church, Donut Drive-Up, 2136 Brady Street, Sunday, September 13th, 2020, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. closure, West High Street between North Main Street, Brady Street, North-South Alley between West High Street and West Pleasant Street, and North Main Street and Brady Street.
Anybody from the council? Public?
Number two is a Sacred Heart City Church outdoor worship gatherings, 2822 Eastern Avenue, every Sunday morning, that weather permits for the remainder of the 2020, 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., outdoor music over 50 dB a.
Anybody from the public? Council? Your Honor?
Just a, this is a noise variance, just to make sure everybody knows.
Okay. McGinnis. Is that Alderwoman McGinnis down there? Okay. You're so quiet.
Oh, yeah, thank you, really. I had a question about this, this particular location. How close is this to a neighborhood? I'm sensitive to this because of an occurrence, and trying to, I understand, you know, the desire to worship. I am a little bit concerned about setting precedent here, having experienced this in my own neighborhood earlier this year, and it was very disturbing to neighbors. I just don't know where this is in conjunction with neighborhoods, because someone speak to them.
I can take that one.
Thank you.
So it's actually at our Annie Witt complex, so the junior theater area, so if you think about kind of that front lawn, they set up a tent up there, and weather permitting, they go outside. So if you think about that general area...
Their neighbors are pretty quiet across the street, so...
That, and on the other side of the train tracks, they're pretty far away. So we've been working with this pastor for months now, so...
Your Honor?
Thank you, and I'll just add to Alderman McGinnis, during the COVID stricks, where we put real restrictions on where people could be, and when I did my executive order, these guys came in, we had a lot of discussion with, we're actually going to sit, we're going to stand, and we made sure that the people across the street wouldn't get woken up, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. You're getting really good at executive orders. And number four is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. We don't go review those, but they're all on our social media website, and Alderman Jobson, please set the agenda.
I make a motion, all items be placed on the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Jobson. The next third area is public works for discussion. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will lead this discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have nine items this evening for public works. First item is the third consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 15.08.300 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Permits." Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number two is the third consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 15.16 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Electrical Code." Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number three is the second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 13.38.100 entitled "Construction Site Erosion and Sediment Control Enforcement" of the Davenport Municipal Code to allow the city council to set the scheduled fines by resolution. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number four is a resolution of endorsement for the use of Transportation Alternatives Program funding for the Veterans Memorial Parkway Trail Extension Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Union Arcade Building subsurface vault fill and support. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number six is a resolution approving a cooperative agreement with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in the amount up to $116,250 for the clean diesel emission reduction through vehicle replacement program for the purchase of three new tandem axle dump trucks. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding the contract for the Kaiser Slot and Square Upgrade Project to Trican General Construction in Dubuque in the amount of $770,450. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have some pictures for the public? My know, Clay's been working real hard on this.
Clay, we're at public works. I don't think we have any available at the moment, but I know I sent those earlier in the day to all of you, so they should be in your inbox.
How about the public?
I can have something ready for next Wednesday.
Thanks.
Alderman Lee.
Could you please explain how much is coming from city funds and how much is coming from donated?
Yes, so there's about $580,000 of city money in this project, but kind of always, as we discussed before, this is about a two-and-a-half to three-year project that we've all been working on, and it's a public-private partnership. So privately, there's about five community organizations that have donated money or raised money for this particular project, and it equates about over $188,000.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clay. Anyone else?
Seeing on this item, we'll move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding the contract for the FY21 Contract Milling Program to Tri-City Blacktop in the amount of $158,472.80. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. And item number nine is a motion awarding the contract for the Sixth and Vine Traffic Circle to Centennial Contractors of Quad Cities on the Leanne Illinois Way in the amount of $86,305. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing on this item, we'll move on. And Alderman Doorman, would you set the agenda, please?
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, and that concludes public works this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, and the next area to discuss, and last area is finance, so it'll be led by Alderman Condon and Alderman Peacock. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five items on the finance agenda this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving a contract and conditionally approving the contract and bond for the fabrication of one modified pumper fire truck to Sufin Corp. of Amblin, Ohio, and authorizing Mayor Mike Mattson to designate, or designate to sign and manage any related agreements. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Alderman Ambrose?
Mr. Fire Chief here. Chief, can you come up and, for the public, talk about this process and what they should expect with a new fire truck?
Mike Carleton, Davenport Fire Chief. 2006, we were fortunate enough to get an order of six engines all at the same time. Just throughout the years, they're coming to age, and we're trying to replace them one at a time as we can get the support from the council and the community. So Sufin has been chosen to actually build this fire truck. It's the same company that just built our 100-foot aerial.
Chief, what are they going to call the truck? The Chief Carlson Truck?
No, they're not going to call it the Chief Carlson Truck. Usually, we leave the naming up to the crews. That's kind of a thing that they have with the pride of the community that they serve. They each have response areas, and so this one, we've narrowed it down to a couple of different ones, but we're not ready to say exactly which one.
I'm going to put a good word in for you, okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Chief, we got the greatest fire department in the country, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for the support.
Seeing no one else from the council, that'll move on. Thank you for the proper pronunciation of Sufin. Okay. Item number two is a resolution adopting the fiscal year '22 budget policies. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Alderman Gripp.
Thank you. I just wanted to make note that stating our budget policies and having conservative budgeting practices and policies have put the city of Davenport in a strong financial position, probably the best financial position in the Quad Cities to deal with the pandemic that we've been dealing with. And so I thank our finance staff for this, and the council's continued support of making sure that we are being financially responsible with the taxpayers' dollars. This year, it's been made apparent that the last probably 10 years of fiscal stewardship has really paid off for the city. That's, you know, councils I've been on, councils before me, but we've made the commitment to have strong financial practices, and we're reaping the rewards right now in that we're not cutting services or raising taxes in response to the pandemic. Thank you.
Alderwoman Dickman.
Nope, I did not buzz in.
Alderman Peacock.
Ken Mallor, can you come up for a sec? You know, we get a lot of questions in regards to the budget, and can you please explain, I wrote this down yesterday, and I reread it, you said, we all have, well, the citizens or the people of Davenport have the opportunity to get public input to the budget. Could you please explain that, please? How they have input to the budget?
Yes, so there are several ways that a citizen can provide input to our budget process. I would say the first way is through the community survey, which is underway right now. So I would put in a plug for that. If you received or will receive something in the mail about that, we would really request that you provide that input, because we really do use that as we develop the budget that we bring forward to you. Later in the month, there will also be a link that goes out, where even if you did not receive the mailer to participate in the community survey, you can still provide input through the website. So we would encourage everyone to do that, and we'll make sure that we put that out through social media when it becomes available. Beyond that, I'm always happy to meet with citizens that have creative ideas and innovative ways that we can do things. You can contact me, contact the finance department, obviously, contact all of you. You are probably our best resource that we have. And then as we get to January and February, we have our public budget workshops, and we would request that the public come and be engaged in that process and provide input.
Sure.
Seeing no one else from council, that item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting the annual Burn Justice Assistant Grant, or JAG, from the federal government for 2020, 2021, in the amount of $81,074. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Alderwoman Lee.
Alderman Condon, would somebody please come up and explain what this grant will be used for?
This grant is used for drug enforcement in Scott County. That's the gist of it.
Okay.
It's an annual grant that we use.
Okay.
Seeing no one else, that item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the purchase of protective equipment from the State of Iowa Department of Administration Services, bid contract with Safeware Inc. in the amount of $1,996, 196,900.
$196,966.
We're going to get more.
You're going to give them two months.
$196,966.24 for the Davenport Police Department. You're never going to get it if you don't ask. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Item number five is a motion approving a five-year contract for the Employee Benefit Brokerage Consulting Services to Assured Partners, Inc. of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $70,000, which includes an annual payment to Milliman, Inc. for the benefit, for the benefit actuarial services. Anyone from the public wishing to address that item? Anyone from council? And finally, on our agenda, we have purchases in the amount of $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of those out loud, but they're listed there for your knowledge, and I will ask Alderman Peacock to please set the agenda.
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Sorry. That concludes finance.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Okay, our next item, is there any other ordinances, resolutions? I don't think there are. So the next item, we have public business, so I'll just ask, please, if you have anything you'd like to say, come up to the podium, please give your name, order, address, if you're not from here, we'd love to know what city you're from. Please be respectful of us, as we are respectful of you. We want to hear from you, we're happy that you're talking to us, and remember, you're talking to everyone, so just please be courteous, and I'll ask everybody to give the attention to the person speaking. Thank you very much. Is there anybody that would like to talk? Hearing and seeing no one, is there any other reports? Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good weekend and be safe.